Any public comment? Last call for public comment. Public comment is now closed. We move on to committee items. The first item up is minutes of last month's meeting. Chair will entertain a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Baer. Any comments? All those in favor will please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Now up to appointments. And once again, we consider the opening on the Sanitary Court Code Board of Appeals for a new term expiring two months from now. We have no applicants as yet. I will advise members that I did approach Sheeler Sanitation and had no response. I will try other installers. Perhaps we'll get somebody one of these days. Any motions from the floor or nominations for that open seat? Hearing none. We will move on to Lifeways Quarterly Report. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Shannon Clevenger with Lifeways. I'm going to give you some highlights of the report that you received. First, Lifeways was selected to be a CCBHC, which is a Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic, and the effective date was October 1st. In your packet, you should have also received an infographic that kind of walks you through what a CCBHC is here in Michigan and the types of services that will be provided. They offer a range of mental health and substance use disorder services to vulnerable individuals and were responsible to directly provide or contract with provider agencies. Nine types of services with an emphasis on the provision of 24-hour crisis care, evidence-based practices, care coordination with local primary care and hospital partners, and the integration of physical health care. Under CMHA, our Communal Health Association, they are still working through a standard cost allocation that's being revised. Their contract negotiating team is developing a stance to oppose the proposed addition to the contract. This is the department's attempt to create more standardized costing relative to services across the state of Michigan, and they proposal to put it into our service contract. Conflict-free access and planning. They've been working on a, with a work group since March of 2023 to ensure compliance with these requirements. There's a number of concerns that have been raised relative to conflict-free. They provided some opportunity for individuals receiving services in the communal health system to participate in focus groups over the summertime, and with the feedback that they received from those, they are, I don't want to say changing course, but they're definitely retrenching a little bit and kind of making some more determinations on what this looks like moving forward. The electronic event verification. This is in response to the department's proposal for a system that is intended and required by CMS to provide a mechanism for providers of personal care and home help services in unlicensed settings, so people's own homes, to report the physical location, the date, start and stop time, and the type of service provided. This has been worked on since pre-COVID, and the state has chosen a vendor, and they've done some piloting through home help agencies over the last, I believe, year, year and a half. So we're working towards this. From Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, we have the Medicaid Health Plan rebid that's going to be occurring, and they're announcing network requirements and a minimum qualification for bidders. There is a link in your document if you would like to review those, which also includes the network adequacy assessment and timely, timely access standards relative to Medicaid recipients. And then last, Midstate Health Network, which is the PIHP for our region, has been working on Equity Upstream Learning Collaborative since June of 2023, and we are a pilot of this.
Commissioner Baer, please.
Thank you. Bottom of the first page, conflict-free access and planning. I've read this. When you're dealing with people, to have a conflict-free environment is a goal.
Yes, most definitely.
But it's not realistic. I mean, you're going to have, and the people you interact with, there's going to be times where hopefully the conflict is just maybe a little louder voice, or you can hear a frustration or anger in the voice. It shouldn't go beyond that, but how are you going to comply with having a conflict-free environment?
So we're waiting to get the guidelines from the department. This is what the department's been working on for about the last nine months, had the focus groups over the summer, got a lot of feedback from individuals receiving services in the community. The big part that the state is looking at now is how to create conflict-free relative to assessment, planning and authorization, and service delivery. So a person comes in for services, they see me, I authorize X services. I also should not be providing those services because there is inherently a conflict. If I refer you to me, there's a financial benefit and gain for me to see you. And so creating opportunities for individuals to, I don't want to say create lanes, but create better standards around the individuals who are assessing and providing services, and creating a bit of transparency around that so that there aren't opportunities for a person to feel, from a service delivery standpoint, it's important for me to keep you in services because for me, that means revenue, right? Verse is looking at it from a treatment and recovery lens and just moving you through the continuum of care, which may mean I lose you as a point of revenue, but there's another person coming in who's assessed from someone else. So it's not about you're unhappy with services. We have mechanisms through our customer service requirements to address that. This is about creating transparency around that assessment and identifying the types of services that you need and a delineation between that function and the provision of service. Yep, absolutely, yep.
Further questions for Lifeways? Just drawing the attention of the committee to some discussions we've had relative to the millage rates. I think the board here is aware that we have a relatively robust millage balance in both the Jackson County and Hillsdale County accounts. Approximately two years' worth of revenue is in the millage balance.
Until our year is closed.
Well.
Right, because there are services in there that have not been accosted to millage yet. It happens at end of year.
Okay, so, well, at least the last report we saw.
Yes, yes.
The revenue was about half of what the fund balance is. Annual revenue. So Commissioner Snell and I, as members on Lifeways Board, have challenged Lifeways, what's the plan for those funds? And we look forward to Lifeways' plans for those funds, and if there are no particular plans, then we'll consider about what's the appropriate mental health millage that should be assessed. So just so the committee is aware of that.
In our year, providers are expected to have all of their claims in by the end of November.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Mike?
If I heard you correctly, it sounded like you, there's certain things you don't charge to the account until the end of the year?
So we have individuals who come on and off of Medicaid, and so when they fall off of Medicaid, we pull the claims from that month because it's usually a full month, and that end of year costs those to the millage. Yes. So we have individuals, as the PHE has expired, the Public Health Emergency, the individuals we are serving, as well as any Medicaid individuals, are having the redetermination process happen. So there was a lot of flexibilities that were allowed prior to, around income and assets, and we are starting to see individuals coming back in through after redetermination, and in June, for example, had Medicaid with no out-of-pocket cost and now have a $1,200 spend down, which is a deductible, to get their Medicaid. So until they hit that $1,200 each month of Medicaid-covered services, they are not Medicaid-eligible.
I see. I was just concerned that at any particular month, the financials do not reflect the true nature of the situation.
They do as of the claim window. So we have a 45- and 60-day window. So with the providers ending November 30th, claims coming in, we should be able to see in December.
So from a rolling average standpoint, then they are consistent. It's just not this day, a couple months a day.
Right, if I pulled today, yes.
Yeah, I got it, thank you.
Yeah. If I pulled September, yeah.
Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Willis.
Thank you.
All those in favor will please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon, for being here. We look forward to seeing Mary Beth Leonard at the Rotary Club tomorrow morning. And the Medical Care Facility, Madam Director, good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Okay, so just a quick update on finances. So for September, we were, financials for September show actuals from Operation Better Than Budget by $142,000. Revenue was better than budget by $27,000, and expenses were better than budget by $115,000. Overall, we were right dead on for our census days that we were expecting for the month of September, so we had a positive variance of .03 in the number of residents that we had. So that really comes out to nothing there. So for our year-to-date, revenue, we're $207,804 behind budget. Expenses were $491,594 better than budget. So our change in net positions from operations is $283,790. And we did receive last month, and I believe this was reported last month from David, an increase in our Medicaid rate that will be going into effect for October's financials. So we anticipate to be able to see some increase in revenue for October. We've also just received word of a financial settlement from Medicaid for 2021 and 2022 in the amount of just over $2 million. So that will be very helpful on the cash flow side of things. So we do have 84 days of cash on hand currently. We do not anticipate any other funds from MOE for the year of 2023. Just a couple other items of note. Currently, as of today, we have 22 residents that have tested positive for COVID, so we're back into outbreak status. Again, things are a little bit more challenging this time. A lot of the tools that we were able to use throughout the pandemic are no longer acceptable as mitigation factors such as shutting down dining or activities, moving residents into isolation rooms. Because our census is higher, we don't have as many rooms available to do that, so that's making this challenge, this situation this time, a little bit more challenging, but we're hearing from other providers in the community that they're also seeing COVID outbreaks in their facilities as well. Outside of that, we are finishing up and finalizing our budget for 2024, and I think that is our high points. We did have one complaint survey last Monday that took place. The state survey inspector found no concerns. They came on two different complaints with no concerns. So that is our update. Anything, any questions?
Questions for the Medical Care Facility? With respect to the $2 million that recently came in on Medicaid, is, is that going to get picked up in revenue then in the current fiscal year, or has that already been booked as receivable?
So that piece, I have to double-check with David on how he, how he did that. I believe it was booked as a receivable, but I.
So you mentioned cash only. That's why I wondered if that's, it's not going to be revenue. It's already been revenue at some point.
Correct. That's my understanding, but I will verify that with him, so. And that money has not yet come in yet, but we are expecting it sometime this month. So that's, that will be good to have.
And with the new rates and the census, would you anticipate something approaching a balanced budget then for next year?
As of right now, our budgeted draft looks like it will be balanced, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Medical Care Facility? Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Willis. All in favor will please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Destiny, for being here. Next up is our Veterans Affairs Department, their semi-annual report. Mr. Director, good to see you, sir.
Good seeing you. Good to be seen, I guess. Yes, most definitely. This is our semi-annual report for the Veterans Affairs, and you've seen your handout. We have just some basic information, what's going on. The Veterans Committee Board, we're still sitting at the four, four members. That's a full board for us, and our board mainly just approves the, the county burials that come in that are state-mandated. American Legion, Veteran Service, they come in one day a week. They cut us down to one day a week for about 10 weeks because another county needs some assistance. They have a few people out on medical, so they've chosen to take their rep out on Fridays. Hopefully we'll get him back because they do a lot, a lot of the work, take a lot of the work off of us when they're there, so it's tough to deal without them. So we're working on it. If you look in here, we answered 1,416 calls in the last, since the last, beginning of the quarter, this half the year. That's a lot of phone calls. I mean, it's, it's a lot. I mean, from those phone calls, it just, a plethora, it goes everywhere, whether it's burial claim or compensation claim or just general information. Right now, we're getting a lot of, a lot of calls about the PAC Act, and the PAC Act is the new legislation that the President signed into law, and there's a review going on with our past widows that had filed claims for burial benefits and compensation benefits that now are under review. So it's, they've had to change forms, and it's kind of hectic course of VA. They make changes, but they don't let us know. So we, we learn as we go. We made 405 appointments in the office. That's quite a few, quite a few appointments for myself. We did this without having, my administrative clerk, she, she had left due to medical reasons, so it's actually hard to hire people. And it's, so we went through this whole process, and fortunately, we found a young lady from here, from Jackson, who applied for the job. I brought her here today with you, with me. Her name's Cassie Lovelace. Where are you at, Cassie? She's supposed to come up front, but she's a little stage, stage fright, I believe. She's a, she's really come along a long way. She started on the 16th of October, and she grasped it. She's, she's getting it. So we're working on getting her accreditation through the American Legion. Also, we're working with the Clerk's Office to get her notary, as a notary, so she can sign the county burials. So, but she's grasping the, the job quite well, and it's much needed. I did attend training conference in August for the annual accreditation training, and then in October, the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency had their first ever accredited service officer training. So there was representatives from all counties and all the service organizations within the state. So it was about 186 attendees, and it was really good training, something that they really needed. I mean, I'm fortunate enough, I came from the service organization side of the house, so all that training is the training we used to give. Now they're starting to get it out to the other counties, which is nice because it's only going to benefit the veterans within the state of Michigan. Basically, we're just going through the training with Cassie, getting her up to speed, and working on getting her accreditation and accesses to our on-base program. The graph we provided, this basically is an overview of the appointments. You can see in July, the majority of our claims, our, our business was claims, and when a claim is someone applying for pensions or for service-connected disabilities. And then we have burials. Burials were quite high. It's just nature of the business. We, we kind of lumped that into the consults and claims because it takes up quite a bit of our, our time and government markers. Every veteran's entitled to a government marker, so we, we work with the local funeral homes, getting those out to people. And appointments, if you look at the one where it says the, when you see the appeal, the dependent record, these are just overview. I mean, we do so much, there are so many different, when someone says, "I want to check on my benefits," that's pretty much a broad question. They just, it just starts from there, and we go from picking their brain and getting them into the lane that we need to get them into to get the benefits. That's kind of all I have right now. If there's any questions, I'd gladly entertain.
Questions for Veterans Affairs? Commissioner Snell, please.
Just a quick comment. Appreciate everything you do. Anything we can do for veterans, it needs to be done.
Thank you.
We would welcome Cassie and note that we don't bite. At least not very hard. So the administrator has a question.
Is this three months or four months report? Because I see four up here, I'm just curious.
It's, it would be the, it would be the four month. I mean, we come in, we came in in April, so I don't, yeah.
So it's four months?
Four months.
Because three would be quarterly, that's why I was curious.
Right, because the way, the way we did it before, this is, I don't know why that got picked up. I don't know if there was a lack with, with, with Lisa Redman when she left. There was not a whole lot of information. Cassie picked up from what we had because she left in July, so.
And in the beginning, you said 1,400 calls. Is that over three months or four months?
That's over the, that's over the four-month period.
Thank you.
With respect to the calls, do you have a mechanism of kind of keeping track of them and, you know, saying, okay, this one's closed, we finished this one, this one's still open, we have to do thus and so with it?
Yes, we, we use a couple different methods. I actually, Cassie came to me, which was Thursday, and said, "Hey, can I change this?" Because she was using what Lisa had in the system. And so she's fine-tuned it where she's breaking it down into a little, something that she can understand, because she's the one that prepares the reports. So I told her, you know, anything you can do to help you generate the, you know, the reports. We also use our, our call mechanism, which was within Outlook, that records the calls, and we can go back, we, it allows us to put notes, and we can go back and track the calls. But yeah, it's, both systems, we're using quite vigorously to keep track.
Just to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks.
Exactly.
If somebody contacted you, they're looking for, you know, some kind of an out.
Right, and there are some calls that fall through. Sometime, you know, we've had some issues through Outlook where calls didn't come in, and then all of a sudden, you come in on a weekend or what, and now these calls were from five days ago. So we, we kind of put those to the forefront and tried to return the calls within the 24-hour period. That's kind of, you know, if we can do them that day, but, you know, when you receive, like right now, you know, the phones are ringing, but, you know, we try to answer them at a time and manner because it's, no one likes to be put off.
Okay. Any further comments? Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Baer and Commissioner Snell. All in favor will please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now the Department on Aging. Madam Director, I believe is here, yes, she is. Good to see you. It's good to see everybody, but always good to see you.
And good afternoon. For my report, it's just a few things I wanted to highlight. We're just starting to begin the Supes On For Seniors fundraiser that we work on with the Friends of Jackson seniors. And again, last month, that helped with the approval of the van for purchase. So again, this endeavor, they usually donate the proceeds from that program back to the Meals on Wheels program. The event will be on March 12th, it's a Tuesday, there at the American One Event Center. We're currently working with some different groups that want to come in and support Meals on Wheels and want to paint bowls. So we actually have this week, Consumers Energy has 15 employees coming over, and they want to paint bowls and kind of learn about the Meals on Wheels program. So we're going to highlight all the different things that we do with that, you know, throw our numbers at them as far as the number of people that we serve, give them a tour of the kitchen and everything that we do as an agency, but they are going to use that opportunity to support us and paint bowls for the program. We also recently did some emergency meal packing. This is something that we do every fall, again, to make sure that our elderly have emergency food in the, in their homes. If we should have what we call an inclement weather day. So if Jackson Public Schools goes down due to weather conditions, we don't send our drivers out, but we always ensure that our clients have food in the home to enable them to make sure they got nutrition on that day. So we recently packed those meals with our advisory board, and we actually have another date planned. My note says here it's in November, but it's actually in December, that Consumers Energy is going to come in and bring about between seven and 10 employees, and they're going to pack like 700 emergency meal bags. So we've, kind of this particular month, we've been inundated with Consumers Energy looking for volunteer opportunities, so we're trying to fill them into different spots, whether it's helping out with a senior activity, packing emergency meals, painting bowls, but it's a great opportunity for them to see what we offer in the community because they may have an older adult that could benefit from services that we provide. We're also working with Wellwise and what, on some community engagement exercises. There's something they're hosting called Connection Cafe, and they recently did one on November 8th, and this was at their facility out in Brooklyn, and they had people come together, and they are going to do this on a monthly basis, and they'll highlight a different topic. So the first one they did was just on building friendships. And our part in that, in the one in Brooklyn, is we had what we called a Food with Friends site. So they were promoting the program, engaging with the seniors on a topic, but we were kind of on the back end, offering a meal as support to that, so people get an opportunity to try a meal prepared by the Department on Aging. We get to count that as a congregate meal towards our grant funding. And then it also gives us an opportunity to share all the resources that we provide, so we're able to take out our, our brochures, our senior circuits, and also highlight everything that we do. So this is really a great partnership. They're also going to then do one on a regular basis at the Crouch Center for the next 12 months, focused on the same topic. So maybe it's not people that, from the Brooklyn area that are coming, you know, they might draw from Napoleon Norville, but if we're doing it here at the Crouch Center, we're able to draw from people in the city, Spring Arbor, some of the other townships on this side of town, where we can offer that opportunity to engage with others, talk about learning natural supports, friendships, and again, connecting with older adults in the community. So again, we're thankful to be part of that program with Wellwise. We also, on here, I noted that at the time that I did the report, we did not have our Statement of Contract Award with Wellwise for the new fiscal year, which started October 1, but we have since received that, so we were able to go ahead and work on our budgets and submit our reports for October at this point. What they did is they did a two-month Statement of Contact or Contract Award, and so we'll expect another one probably in December. I think there's a little, they're trying to figure out how much they're going to receive on the federal side as far as grant funds, so we're waiting to have that awarded. To highlight a moment of excellence, I just wanted to share one of our advisory board members was recently out at a home. He does real estate, and we always talk about the different services that we offer at the advisory board, and he actually got to see it put into practice when he was at a home of a senior that was selling his residence, and he had somebody come through, and he was able to see the, the senior was still at the home, do it as mobility impairments. And so the meal got delivered right at the time during the showing of the home, so we got to see it put into practice, how it was delivered, see the presentation of the meal, and the senior just talked about and highlighted the services that he received. He was a little bit hesitant, didn't know what he was going to get as far as the program, and he's been pleasantly surprised in the quality of the meals. Again, that's a great job to our kitchen team and our nutrition manager, who helped to plan that meal and get that service out to the seniors. So he was very complimentary of the program. I also just threw in some pictures of some of the different craft showcases that we did. So recently, we had the woodworkers that brought in various thing that they made so that the public could kind of come in and see all the things that they make and hopefully join their group. They usually have ranging from 10 to 15 people, but they're always welcoming new members, and they're there to help teach people. And then we also had the quilters that did their, their. and they're there to help teach people. And then, we also had the quilters that did their, their showing. They're actually with the hospice home, but what we do is, I'm sorry, they're with Henry, Henry Ford Allegiance. And what they do is they work with the hospice home to hand out the blankets, but they're always looking for volunteers to help sew and iron and put things together. And so, they were able to showcase a lot of the quilts that they make. And last week, on November eighth, we had the Granny Square Group did their kind of like expo where people could come in and see all the blankets, blankets that they made. They actually had like a hundred and twenty blankets out. And those blankets will go out to the home care clients and the meal clients. Our workers tend to take those out and they look for people that don't look like they have a lot of family support, that could kind of use that pick-me-up. And this is just a sample of one of the blankets, blankets that they made. They used to always wrap them, but leaving them open, more exposed with just a ribbon and kind of like a Christmas card on there. It helps the workers that take them to picture the person that's receiving it, which has been great. So, you can kind of look at like different patterns and colors and, you know, what one might work for a male or a female. And people really, we start to get calls from people that receive them, just a nice little pick-me-up. And again, that community support is so appreciated. Any questions?
Questions for the director? Commissioner Williams, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I just have just two quick questions for you. On the soup for seniors, do we have a time for that program?
Five thirty to seven thirty.
Five thirty, seven thirty. Okay, thank you. And then finally, for the emergency meal packing, are those meals delivered by the, the Meals on Wheels?
Yes, they are. Yep. So, when we did the one with the advisory council, we packed them on a Wednesday and they were all delivered on a Friday out to the clients.
So, is it the same group of people that already received the, the meals throughout the week?
Correct. They are. So, the person has to be a client of ours to receive the emergency meals.
Okay, I see. Okay.
So, not just generally hand it out to the community. It's for people that are going to be on our routes that need that delivery. And part of the standard is, is that we do send out emergency meals throughout the year, but in October, we do a big blanket and then we replenish if we have an inclement weather day. But in general, what the emergency meals have helped with is if there's been like a power outage in a particular area or maybe, I know there was a situation where maybe a street got closed down because of an incident that happened in that area and maybe it wasn't safe for our drivers to enter. And so, we were able to call the client and say, can you use your emergency meals today? And then, we replenish them.
I see. Okay. Nothing further. Thank you.
Commissioner Bear, please.
In your printout here, that moment of excellence is a nice story. So, thank you for what you do.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And it's nice to see that our advisory board gets to see that in-person kind of situation and then share that with the other members.
With respect to the, oh, I'm sorry. Mike has a question.
No, I was just going to say that I would encourage everyone to, you know, go over for a meal, go over for lunch. They love to have company. Well, it's not all tables do. Some tables will be like, this is a non-talking table. Otherwise, most are pretty good and the food is good. And I think, you know, there's nothing like firsthand sitting there and talking to the seniors to really see the impact this program has on them. In fact, I can't say enough good things. You know, you always, I'm always talking about you guys, that the program they do, it's, it's phenomenal. It, it really changes lives in our community. And I could say the same thing about the Health Department, too. Not to be slighted.
Well, and I would encourage members to try and attend Supes On for Seniors. My wife and I have been there the past couple of years and they really, they like having commissioners there and you can kind of work the room a little bit and have a nice time with them. So, it's, it's a good time. With respect to the consumers group, I recall in the past, consumers has a kind of a, like an encouraging sort of a donations program where their employees are doing volunteer work in the community. They can turn in their hours to the, I think it's a Consumers Foundation or something, and you get a contribution. The employees, I assume, are aware of that. I'm sure, I'm, I'm pretty sure you're aware of it, too, Danielle.
Yeah, we are aware of that. And I know that we currently have some of people on our advisory board that are retirees and they have submitted their hours and we've received donations back. And that may be something that this group is able to do. They're hoping that the people that are organizing the bowl, that the, the, that the workers will make a donation back to the program. We'll see if that happens. But I think it's really the big education piece, just letting people know that the service is available. So, we're happy to have them come in and support the program and maybe some of them will come to Supes On.
Okay. Anything further? Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Bear. All in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. And now, our Health Department. Madam Health Officer.
You thought you were going to have a quick meeting.
We're going to be thorough. We're going to be thorough.
I, I have one of, I'll, I'll talk about her in a little bit, but Emmy is here, opioid health educator. And I said, this is not a normal one where I have six items on the agenda, but good stuff, good stuff coming. The first item I have is a request to approve acceptance of the Emergency Local Public Health Service funding. In addition to that funding, we anticipated this funding was coming. It was approved through the Michigan Legislature, but how that was going to be distributed and what numbers were going to go to each Health Department, we're in a planning process and we just received notification on that at the end of October. So, for you, I have a request to accept three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in additional funding for our essential services. Quick note to note out, when you get down to the financial, there talks about where, where those different pots of money make up that three hundred and seventy-five thousand or three hundred and seventy thousand. The, what is not included in there is an increase to hearing and vision that was not approved and did not go through legislature to improve, prove numbers here, there. But what we have learned, it is an area where, where numbers are low and have been low for a while, but we are able to, just forewarn you, we may, we can move some money within these pots to potentially go to hearing and vision. So, you may hear as we go along through the year and going forward, where we might request some funds from these to be transferred to, to them. But these are for our essential local public health services.
Questions on the staff recommendation? Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Williams. Any further questions? Now, if I write, this is to recommend to the full board. Is that right, Mr. Administrator? Is that right? To recommend to the full board? Very good. Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Commissioner Bear, to the motion, please.
Similar to a previous meeting, the, at the top of the document, there's a motion requested. At the bottom of the document, there's a recommendation or a motion. They're not identical. Which motion are we moving?
The motion. There's just, there's just some additional, the motion. The recommendation just says the Health Officer recommends.
The motion. Okay, thank you.
Basically, the same thing. Yeah.
You got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Further questions to the point? All those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Number two.
And up to the next point would be the Public Health Infrastructure Grant Acceptance.
So, this is a, this is a pot of funding that has been in the works through MDHHS for a little while now. It's a, it's ultimately money coming from the CDC that gives five million dollars to local public health over the course of five years, now four years. It was originally for five years, but it wasn't approved through the legislature. So, we couldn't award it before then or they didn't award it before then. So, again, this one comes. There's some supporting documentation, but we're pretty unrestricted in the amount and where we can use it. There's not a, a lot of stipulations on how we can use it. So, what we are really trying to do is, is improve the infrastructure at the Health Department. There's a lot of our IT and technology and software things that are, that are outdated. So, I've talked with the IT director on how we can, you know, leverage these funds along with other funds to improve some of that. You know, an example is our Wi-Fi in our clinics in the internal parts, parts of the building doesn't work, which causes a problem, for instance, for, there was previously a video and quiz that we asked clients to take regarding medical marijuana to coordinate those programs together in order to get a marijuana lock bag, which many of our certain clients that were in those clinic areas heard about and wanted. But we couldn't have them do that because we didn't have Wi-Fi in the area. So, working on some of those kind of things, infrastructure, things like our lab has really outdated equipment and materials. So, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, this will be coming and will go on the budget going forward because we actually receive a hundred and seventy-six thousand per, let me get you the actual total, though. We actually will receive over the course of four years, a hun, seven hundred and four thousand dollars over four years. We are just requesting to use a hundred and sixty thousand of that this year.
Questions with respect to the issue? Commissioner Snell, please.
I have a question. I'll move the recommendation to the full board.
Thank you, Commissioner Snell for the motion and Commissioner Willis for the support. Are there questions to the motion? And this is again, a recommendation to the full board. Is that correct? All those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And lastly, is another, basically with the COVID funds that have come in since 2020, as COVID funds are not used, they've carried over from year to year. This is money that was carried over from last year to this year in the total of a hundred and ten thousand to support COVID workforce. Just to say what we are doing with a lot of this funding is really supporting training and development of staff. As you're all very well aware, hiring and retaining staff is, is not always the easiest in this day and age. And, you know, one of the things we know and one of the things employees are asking for is additional training and additional, you know, resources available to, to develop themselves. So, we are, we have spent a lot of this COVID workforce money developing and coming, going right back into our own staff for their trainings.
Questions with respect to the kindergarten oral health?
No, this is the COVID.
I'm sorry? COVID what?
The COVID workforce.
I beg your pardon. Here I am on the wrong thing. Sorry. Questions to this point, the COVID workforce. supplemental. Commissioner Williams, please.
Thank you. Just one quick question, just for, just for better understanding on my part. So, the dollars are, I guess the question is, what type of training are they doing? Is it related to COVID-19 or is it just general Health Department?
It has gone a lot more general. Like generally, they say, because COVID and communicable disease and pretty much everything we do has to do, you know, for instance, our health resource advocates, that's a separate pot of funding, but they're able to work on, you know, mental health, vaping, you know, different things that, that promote health across the spectrum. So, although there is still COVID funds that are coming in, we are, there, there is broadened use of those. And there's a lot of different ways that we can say, you know, that, that training. So, it's not specific COVID trainings. Like our Michigan Premier Public Health Conference had a lot of sessions and seminars that we could cover about fifty percent of, of that cost with COVID funds.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bear has a question.
Another question. I'd like to move the requested motion presented by the Health Department.
Thank you. And Commissioner Snell supports. Any further commentary? All those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we can move on to the kindergarten thing. I was so excited to get to it.
So, this is a contract that you have seen in the past a couple of times over the last year and a half because I thought we were set the last time to have it set that we wouldn't have to do it. It was set to renew annually. However, the numbers and the, the amount that the state allocates to us has been ever changing. In fact, I included in the attachments a number that is changing already from January, or excuse me, from, that will change in January from what was reported to us and budgeted for in our October start for our budget, and that increased it by thirty thousand. So, we've changed the language in here to hopefully not have to come back to you with this contract for Smiles on Wheels to run our dental program, our kindergarten oral health assessment program. Basically, just that the funds that are coming from the state are allocated and specifically for use for the kindergarten oral health assessment. As those numbers change, so now it just says that it's, that, that we will keep ten percent, the health, the county and the Health Department will keep ten percent for administrative oversight and Smiles on Wheels will be contracted with the rest of that amount, whatever that state allocated amount is, and recurring automatically until one of us decides to change that.
Questions with respect to this? Commissioner Bear, please.
Kristen, the, I want to make sure I understand what the state legislature and governor have done here. Under cover letter, part, item two, current situation. This dental evaluation is now required for the kids who even enter kindergarten. I think, again, that's a government overreach. So, not a complaint with you. I'd like to get that message back to the state. I think they're getting into areas where they should allow parent control. Parenting to school, this is under your analysis, Smiles on Wheels will be the agency providing these services. And in part three D says that this will be automatic annual renewal hereafter. If at some point we become dissatisfied with Smiles on Wheels, this automatic renewal, are we not going to be able to change to some other agency?
In the contract, there's language that either party can terminate the contract with, I don't know, I, off the top of my head, if it's sixty or ninety days, but with notice that the contract can be terminated. So, to answer your question, yes, we would still be able to get out of that contract. At this point, they have done a, you know, a fabulous job with us. They're very well poised, even, even with our new funding, going up to ninety-five thousand dollars in January, there's no way we would be able to do what they are able to do with, with that funding. That would barely hire, you know, a hy, one hygienist to do that work. So...
All right. Not a, not a complaint. Looking for clarification. I want to make sure we don't get into trouble with any of this. Under the contracted service agreement, first paragraph, Smiles on Wheels here and after called the agency. And then, we go to page four. That's the assessment form that we have to fill out. Under part one, demographic information, Jackson County Health Department is the agency. We get down to part two, project service information. Two B is the implementing agency. And it, it is checked off that that is the, it's, it's the same, so it's the Michigan Department of Health. But the first page of that contract, I read that the, the agency is, is the Smiles Group. So, on the survey form, part B, is it correct to be implementing agency the same as demographic agency? Because that says the implementing agency is you, not Smiles on Wheels. Are we okay with this, the way this is filled out?
What this is, attachment B on that page four, is basically a screenshot of what goes into the E grams, which is the, the state system that tells us how much funds, the funds that we have. So, that is from us as, as MDHHS's agency. The agency for the actual contract language is, is Smiles on Wheels. So, for instance, this one on here is showing, it's just an attachment on there showing that we are receiving at this point in time, sixty-five thousand dollars for, from MDHHS. But we're the agent, we are the agency of the state receiving that. But the contract was Smiles on Wheels. So, that's just, that's their, I don't think we're in any, this is how it's been for the past year and a half. It's not, we're not saying that they're receiving that. That's not what that's saying.
Okay. Got a question on, sorry, I lost my page. Okay. Um, I have a question on, I lost my page now. There is a, uh, I'll find, there's a statement here that the, uh, that they have to take photographs if there's, uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Probably on attach, is it attachment A?
They're taking photographs and I know there's a federal law about sending photos of children over email.
So what the, what this does is the hygienist, they are just, the hygienists are there to do an assessment. And that is basically to look at the kid's teeth, see if they see anything, um, that stands out, that looks, um, not right, doesn't look like a healthy child's mouth. Um, one of the things in the reason that this came about, um, it goes very, it goes right alongside the hearing and vision program where we do hearing and vision tests, um, prior to kids starting school and then subsequently along the way, um, is that dental problems are keeping kids out of school. And, um, not all kids are getting dental care, the, the, um, preventative dental care or even, um, acute dental care that they need. So this allows the hygienist to look at the teeth. They don't, they aren't allowed to touch the student, they just look at the teeth. If there is an extreme area of concern, if they see decay, for instance, they take a picture of that child's, um, the tooth. It is not identifiable as, it's not a picture of the child, it's a picture of the child's tooth. And then they have dentists who they can, um, either refer to and send that information to. One of the things I talked about, and I know Commissioner Polesky, um, gave us, you know, some information on his dentist. Um, but one of the areas that we've noticed a problem is getting those, someone with, um, a child with a problem into a dentist than to be into a dentist. So they just take a picture of that information to document what was seen, um, and that's then subsequently sent to. It becomes part of that child's record with Smiles on Wheels and that's, um, mandated by HIPAA and covered, covered under that privacy as public health info, or excuse me, patient health information. But it wouldn't, or protected health information, losing my mind. Um, but that wouldn't be, we're not taking a picture of a child and distributing it anywhere outside of HIPAA guidance.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Commissioner Snell, please.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Barrett. Any further questions? Um, just to, just for my edification, Kristin, uh, what's, how's the, um, Center for Family Health Dental Clinic doing? Are they working at capacity or, or do they have any extra capacity to deal with any of the issues that arise from these assessments?
To be honest with you, I haven't had, I haven't heard any troubles lately. I know, um, I had brought that to, to concern a little while ago. We, um, the Deputy Health Officer Holly and myself, um, met with our dental dentist and I think we worked out, there might have been some referral kinks along the way, but I, I'm, I'm not hearing that we're having struggling there because they have claimed to have, um, capacity.
Okay.
And we're not, I'm not hearing it right now.
Um, let us know next month if, uh, just, just the status, if you would, not to, not that there's any problems, but just keep in good touch of them. Okay, all in favor of the motion will please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. See if I can find the right agenda item next. Okay, it's opioid settlement funds.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I found the right one.
Yes, so this is a kind of lengthy request and a lengthy, um, supporting document to go along with it. But, um, very first, um, thank you for, you know, supporting the Health Department and bringing in the Health Educator for, um, opioid prevention and remediation. Um, I, it's Emmy and she is with me today. Um, she's been in that position for six months. I know, um, I know, uh, Mike Overton has had a chance to see her in action. We were fortunate to bring her to, um, to, uh, to a county wellness event where she, um, along with other partners in the community talked about stigma and, um, Narcan training and things like that for, for Jackson County's, um, staff. Anyone interested in going, so, um, but she, in her work and in what we've heard along the way as we have, um, started working in the opioid space is, you know, there's more money coming and where is that money going to go and how are we going to get that? At this point, I still don't think, Deborah, I don't think we have received any of the additional fundings, but there is a one point six million dollars set, um, from other settlements that were not given to the Health Department to come into the county. Um, but what are we going to do with those? With Emmy and her work and her, um, relationships that she's building in the community, um, we thought we were, as the Health Department, we're well poised to put together an RFP, um, to allow community, um, members and community organizations working in that space to solicit some of those funds as they come in. Um, the caveat to this and where there are still a few questions that remain blank or highlights in the actual RFP are how much can we, um, put out that we can, because we can't spend those funds before we, um, receive them. And that was kind of, you know, I think it was March of twenty twenty-one, when we, twenty-one or twenty-two, when we, um, approve, when you as a board approved, um, the Johnson and Johnson funds to come for Emmy's position. But we weren't able to start spending that and actually hire her until six months ago because we didn't receive those funds. So it would be, um, not wise use of funds to spend money before we have it. So as those funds come in, we will be able to put a cap and number on how much can go out during the years. But this RFP, um, Emmy did a lot of work on it. Uh, look, there's a lot of reference to, you know, the, the Michigan Attorney General has guidance on things we have to use it for. We have heard from you and heard where, you know, the prevention space was, you know, the primary space we wanted to focus on. Or that you all as a board had requested focus on. Um, so we have put together a few strategic, the, the exhibit E, which is linked a couple of times, is a multi-page document that has a lot of information. So we, um, have kind of pulled some pieces out and, um, we're just looking for your approval to, once we receive funding. And we can, we can actually start, put, put their RFP out prior to see what requests are out there. We can then review them and then start funding things as the funds become available. But, um, basically asking for the Health Department to act as the intermediary in between there where we can bring those requests, you know, to you for final approval.
Questions with respect to this, uh, issue? I, I will tell you, I did get an email from, um, one of the local organizations that wants to be considered for allocation. This is the sort of thing now that you'll embark upon and they'll have a chance to, uh, to say, here's what we would like to do, right?
Yes, one hundred percent. And that's where we were hearing, we were hearing it. I know, you know, the administrators offer was hearing it. It is, has become, you know, I, I, my email now and probably Emmy's as well is full of, um, all sorts of people and sales pitches for,
Sure.
for things. And then, but, but in that same token, you know, yes, now that they know that the funding is out there, they know it's coming. Um, how do we get, what kind of process are we going to, instead of saying, well, when we get it? But this is a process for them to solicit requests to.
Okay. The Chair will entertain a motion. Oh, Commissioner Barrett, I'm sorry. Let's get, let's get the motion and.
Support.
And support, I heard from Commissioner Willis and now Commissioner Barrett has a question.
Making that motion was what I turned my microphone on for.
Oh, very good. Uh, there seems to be a, a clamor to, to do your thing, uh, Kristin. So any further questions? No, there being none, all those in favor of the staff recommendation will please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, thank you. All right, are we up to your report yet? Here we are, up to your report now.
We are. This is my standard monthly report, um, updated to change, you know, a few things along the way, talking about what's going on. I think I'll start with some opioid talk since we, um, that's been already discussed. But, you know, some of the things that Emmy is doing, um, one of the things I was thinking about as, as, you know, an answer of, you know, where she's seeing gaps, um, one of the things that just came to mind is we had a conversation in the last couple of months about, um, the safe storage for, um, marijuana. Um, one of the things that a lot of people, um, resort to after stopping opioid use is, um, marijuana, which is, it's legal to possess and use, um, on the federal level right now. As you know, that, as I've talked about before, that medical marijuana grant, um, runs through September and then we have a gap where we're able to, um, offer from Sep- the middle of September until December where we're not able to, you know, give any lock bags or anything like that away. Even, um, even other types of, of prescriptions and things. Um, Emmy has heard, you know, a need for those like lock bags to continue. So, um, we will be using some of the opioid funds to purchase lock bags to support either, either marijuana or whatever, you know, the intended recipient needs to keep safe. You know, we, we do want to promote the safe, um, use of legally obtained, um, prescriptions or, or marijuana. So, um, we're going to track some of that, see what kind of need there is in those, in those intermediate months. As I mentioned, uh, she is working, re- should be with, um, Home of New Vision this afternoon. She's working out in the community a lot, doing, um, that stigma training, I, in the Narcan, we're distributing Narcan a lot. And that's, you know, one of the things that we have, have heard that it's not, that's not even just, uh, necessarily an opioid abuser's need. That is, you know, any of us who take an opiate for whatever reason. So getting those in the hands of people, um, that need them. Health resource advocates are in the school, all hearing and vision program, um, information is on there. I don't have a whole lot specific to point out unless you have any questions about anything else going on with that.
Questions for the Health Department? I, I heard, um, perhaps an article on the radio within the past week or so about an, um, an increase in syphilis, kind of nationwide. I don't know that it's necessarily here, but, uh, um, I see we have chlamydia and gonorrhea up. And what, what is the syphilis situation?
I think it was about last year at this time. Syphilis is up at, uh, across the nation, across the way. And I think we, um, it was about a year ago or so that I provided some more detailed, um, numbers on syphilis. Syphilis gets into a little bit, um, but it's a little bit more complex because there's like latent and, um, a few different statuses of syphilis. So just giving a blanket increase on syphilis isn't super easy to do. But if that's something that you're interested, it would be probably, like I said, it's been about a year since we updated those, those specific numbers for this report.
And with respect to the septic tank loan program, have you seen people, um, I tried to kind of talk it up out my way, which is where there's a lot of folks with septic systems. Uh, any, any approaches from folks, uh, to apply for those?
I'm not sure. I know we're receiving calls, but we're not managing any of those calls. So any calls, we refer directly to the state because that's, that's managed by the state.
At my talent shifts, I will tell you that, that when they heard Eagle was involved and that you guys would help them, they, they were thankful because Eagle is not easy to deal with.
So I know our clerks are receiving those calls as far as what numbers and how that, that, any of that funds have been distributed. I know the need is high, is, is a lot bigger than the amount available to help with, with that.
Commissioner Barrett has a question.
The septic and well requirements that the state is now going to be mandating, uh, how's that going to affect your staffing and your budget?
Um, at this point, I don't know. I don't know what that will do. Um, I do know that we, you know, we recently hired a new, there's additional type two funding, um, earlier this year. So we have an increase in sanitarian from previous years. So we have a sanitarian who started sometime this summer, um, that increased our sanitarian staff levels. So with that, depending on what changes, um, I, I, I don't know, we'd have to evaluate that as, as we get more information and what the actual requirements are.
Mr. Chair has a question.
Not a question, just a comment. I was able to attend the chili cook-off in downtown Jackson this past, uh, fall and your sanitarians were there and conducted a very thorough and very good explanation of what the restaurateurs were to do. And I believe we went, went through it again this year, preparing a little bit over, huh, two-hundred-and-fifty gallons of chili and had no incident of any type of healthborne-related issues at all through it. And also were safe with the atmosphere and everything that went on and had a very nice event in downtown Jackson. Again, your sanitarians were there at the very beginning and made it so it was all possible. And I thank you and your staff.
Thank you. They've, they've done some great things in as far as those, those multi, um, vendor events and, and how they're covering those, not only on like the fee schedule structure, but on, um, education and, and plans ahead of time, like the night before the actual event starts where, you know, some of the problems that might come up, um, when they actually start cooking that day can be, um, taken care of a little bit ahead of time.
And I will tell you that I was having kind of an early lunch at one of our downtown restaurants and one of your folks was in doing an inspection and being followed around very nervously by the owner. Uh, but, uh, after it was over, I asked how, what the experience was. Oh, uh, they're very thorough, but they're very, um, helpful and, um, it, it sounded like it was a good and positive experience for them. So, uh, congratulations to your sanitarians for doing a good job there. Anything further?
Yes, I also wanted to, to thank you and, and your employees, the sanitarians for the work that they've done. Uh, in terms of the contracts you're just speaking of and the processes that they're doing, organizations having events like the chili cook-off has been a, a great help. So a lot of different groups that we work with, I know in particular, the training sessions combined with all the different vendors, different things like that, the presence there has been greatly felt. So it's been a, a big appreciation and even in the restructuring of the fees and things. It's been a big help to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion to receive the Health Department's report.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrett and Commissioner Snell. All those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move on now to claims. Chair will entertain a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Snell. All those in favor of paying the claims will please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, please take note of minutes that are on your, um, board docs, Veterans Affairs meeting minutes and the DHHS board meeting minutes. We are now, I'll see, and reporting schedule in December, uh, DHHS quarterly, medical care facility, well, they were here today. Maybe we don't have you next month. I'll, we'll check, uh, let's, Destiny, let's check on that, okay? If it's quarterly, you were here today, right? And then the medical examiner semi-annual. We're now up to public comment. Uh, public comment is now open. Any public comment? Any public comment at all? Public comment is now closed. We'll move on to committee member comments. Any committee member comments? Seeing none, we stand adjourned at the call of the Chair. Thank you.